Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience with us this evening as we gather together. I want to welcome everybody to our board meeting this evening for the regular public board meeting this day, January the 13th, 2025, our first board meeting of the 2025 year. Before we get started, I want to respectfully honor and acknowledge that we are meeting this evening on the unceded territory of the Sakwepnik people, specifically to come with the Sakwepnik Nation. I'm very honored to live, work, and play on these beautiful lands, and I have a lot of gratitude for the stewards of the Sakwepnik people who have been the caretakers of this land since time in memoriam. So, thank you so much, or memorial, sorry, thank you so much. Before we start our meeting this evening, I just wanted to welcome everybody to our meeting. We often go through this where we just sort of talk a little bit about our expected conduct for everyone who's present. We ask that people remain respectful at all times, that rude or foul language or aggressive or abusive behavior such as outbursts will not be tolerated. We also consider inflammatory statements, remarks of a racial or discriminatory nature, and unsubstantiated allegations to be abusive behavior. Should this occur, and I feel that the meeting is no longer manageable, I will call a short recess where staff, trustees, and invited guests will remove themselves from the meeting, and if there are further disturbances, and if necessary, the RCMP will be contacted. Please ensure that your cell phones are on silent so that this meeting is not interrupted. And I was going to say that it's because of our wonderful education topic this evening that we have a news camera in the room as well, so no added pressure to anybody being here. But on that note, we will get started with our meeting. So trustees, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the regular public board meeting minutes from December the 9th, moved by trustee Kang. Do I have a second, or seconded by trustee Karpuk? Is there any discussion on the minutes circulated for this evening's meeting? All right, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. I should actually say before we move forward that I'm also sending regrets on behalf of Vice Chair Kershaw. She is at home this evening and won't be able to join us, so I apologize for not doing that before. Trustees, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as circulated for this evening's meeting. Moved by trustee McKelvey, seconded by trustee O'Fee. Trustees, is there anything that you wanted lifted from this evening's consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Trustees, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting as circulated. Yes, moved by trustee Jewels, seconded by trustee Kang. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? All right, I'm not seeing anything from trustees. Dr. Nixon, anything from you? No? And Acting Secretary Treasurer Talan?
Nothing from me.
Nothing? Excellent. I will call the question then. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. That brings us to item next, the education topic for this evening. And Dr. Nixon, I will turn it over to you for the introduction of the education topic.
Wonderful. Welcome to the students, the parents, the staff, community members, and to the board of trustees. We look forward to learning this evening about the Digital Arts and Technology Academy at Valley View Secondary School. This is a district-wide academy which is focused on enabling students to develop relevant skills in digital art, computer programming, and video game design, while also preparing for careers in various industries. Tonight, we will hear from the principal of Valley View Secondary, Walt Kirschner, the program instructor Rebecca Berendrick, and students from the program, Lucas, Ryan, and Reina. So, welcome.
To do the same, to give you sort of the who and what we are with the Data Academy, but I'd also acknowledge Director Keenline and his work from a district perspective as to the opportunities in our program there. We have students from Barrier, Logan Lake, all around the district, which obviously is really important to the composition of what we do. And you're going to see here shortly some of the evidence of learning and the work that the kids are doing. So with that being said, I'm going to have the kids come forward here, students, do some introductions, and we'll get started from there, as long as we're all hooked up. There we go. Sure, yeah, if they can come up.
If we could bring in chairs. Thank you. Can you hear me? All right. Well, thank you all for having us here today. I'm thrilled to get to speak to you about the Digital Arts and Technology Academy, or as we affectionately refer to it, DATA. As Walt said, I'm Rebecca Berendrick, and I've been teaching the program for the last three years. So I'm going to start off. Since I'm a teacher, I'm going to pull a little teacher move on you and get you to raise your hand if you've ever played a video game. I figured it'd be most of us, because you may not know, but it is the entertainment media industry that brings in the most revenue globally. It beats out music, movies, film, books, everything. But now I want you to raise your hand if you've ever made a video game. So, you're my guest, that that's what we do at DATA. So a big part of what we do is we spend a semester learning all about this thriving industry by creating video games. All right. There we go. Okay. So what goes into creating a video game? So, there are so many skills, technical skills, but also just life skills and soft skills that students need to know. So these include art, design, programming, knowledge of math and physics, sound and music, video production, and then, like I said, those skills that are just valuable to everyone, like project management, storytelling, problem solving, teamwork, and communication. So all these skills and more are what the students learn in the DATA. So to give a little background information on DATA, I'm going to answer these four questions. So first of all, what is DATA? DATA is a school district 73 Trades and Transitions program. The program actually began in 2013 under a different name called the Digipen Tech Academy, which you might have heard of. Which brings us to the next question, who's it for? So DATA is for grades 11 and 12 students. They have to apply, but they come from all over the district, so anyone in the district in grade 11 or 12 can attend. And they, I actually have students this year from eight of the different high schools, including Logan Lake and Barrier. Where is it? So as Walt said, it's at Valley View. It is a one semester of full-time work for these students. Since 2022, it's been located at Valley View in the new wing, in the east wing, and we have a beautiful computer lab there that becomes really a home away from home for the students. And then finally, what do students get out of this? So other than all the skills I already mentioned, because it's a full semester, they get four high school courses, so elective credits, and then if they choose to go to TRU's Computing Science Program, they get two courses there as well. And now I'm just going to share a little more about what exactly we do. So what do students learn in DATA? The course is broken down into three major components, so the first being art and design. Students learn 2D art, 3D digital modeling, pixel art, and animation, as well as sound and video design. Next, we have computer science. So they learn coding, software development, and they actually use programming languages and techniques that are used in the real world, in information technology everywhere. And then, of course, game development. So students learn the full process of video game production, from the concept creation all the way through to launching and promoting their games. And how do they learn all these things? Well, it's largely through project-based instruction, so through a combination of individual and group projects, they basically create video games through the course. So some of them you'll see in a minute. There's a five-week-long final project that they do in groups. And by the end of the semester, they've built a very impressive portfolio of their work that they can really showcase to any workplace. They also benefit from connecting with experts, so networking with industry experts through various connections and visiting studios in Vancouver. And finally, and I think possibly most importantly, DATA provides students an opportunity to work in a highly collaborative community. They have like-minded learners surrounding them all the time. So it's a rare high school experience that they get to spend this much time with a group of peers that share such similar interests and passions as them. The nature of the program allows for building a truly impactful community where the students build lifelong friendships, and they feel safe, supported, and just consistently have positive experiences. They really get to join together and learn things that they're passionate about and create amazing projects together. So I put together a little one-and-a-half-minute highlight reel. I hope you can hear. I don't know if the audio is going to work, but this is their student work highlights over the last three years. So some of these are going to be video games, some of them are animations. They've been created either individually or in group projects, some of them over really just a few days, some of them over five-week longer-term end projects, or end-of-the-term projects. But I hope you can see just, and think maybe about all of the things that had to go into creating these. So like I mentioned on that second slide, just the amount of art and programming and teamwork collaboration that they had to really learn and develop through the semester to be able to create all these fun projects. And you can see there's some mix of 2D games and 3D games, so quite a variety where they get to just express their personal art styles, and they get to really showcase their creativity and, yeah, just highlight things that they're interested in. So I hope you got to see there a little bit about what makes me so passionate about this program, just the amazing, the effort that they put in, the heart and the soul they put into these projects, and really just how incredibly talented they are. So, now to speak about the program. From students' perspectives, I've brought these three lovely students with me today, and we prepared a little Q and A session. So first of all, use the mic here, if you could introduce yourselves again?
Yeah, I'm Lucas. I normally go to Sali, I'm grade 11, and...
Hi, I'm Ryan. I use safety pronouns, and I went to Valley View.
Hi, I'm Taryn. I went to Norcam, and I am currently in grade 11.
This is actually one of Taryn's works in the background. Okay, first question, why did you choose DATA?
Well, I took the video game maker class in great time. And we just did basic Adobe programming. So every day, I was just looking forward to that class, and I saw DATA. And not only I can do it every day, but I can do it every block, and I can get, you know, practice for, and credits for university.
I've had an interesting game design for a few years now, and I love the idea of being able to tell a story through that is impactful. I've been a fan of storytelling through art for years, since I was young. So being able to create a story that you get to play through, that is what I strive to create. And although I specialize in art, I have played with coding in previous years through our Valley View's computer class, like, computer coding classes you can take as electives. And so knowing, having a little bit, only a little bit of knowledge through coding, I wanted to also learn more so I can make my own classes.
As an artist, I've spent most of my school life taking every chance I get to practice and learn more about my chosen career choice. I've never really expressed that big of an interest in the programming side, but when I heard about the DATA program, I was ecstatic. Despite never loving programming, I did love games, and the concept of taking the art I make and applying it to the medium I love was such an exciting concept. Choosing DATA also meant I would spend an entire semester of school doing the things I loved, and it was the closest possible thing to an animation course I could hope for.
Great. Second question, what has the DATA experience been like for you?
I mean, so far, it's been the best semester I've had. You can relate with like everyone in the class, since, you know, we all have something in common. And the team dynamic for the final project has been great, and it's been making it even better, since we can all work on the thing that we're specialized in and that we all love doing, and create a good result.
DATA has probably been one of the best things I've ever done. Having such a close class with people who are all so very different, but also very similar at the same time is amazing. You can all collaborate and just talk and hang out with each other, and it's very comfortable. While learning all different aspects of making a game, but having the opportunity to also specialize in art and learning different things, like how to make a background for a game, as well as, in my group project, we have two artists, so I've had to learn how to be able to merge two different artists and two very distinctive styles and figure out a middle ground that works for the both of us, it still looks cohesive.
DATA has been an amazing experience for me. When I first joined, I was worried that the art portion of the course would be very small in comparison to the rest, but I was pleasantly surprised to find out each project had an equal amount of both sides. Outside of the learning aspects of the course, I've never felt this connected to and accepted in a classroom like this. DATA is definitely a semester I will remember.
And final question, how has DATA supported your progress toward future goals?
Yeah, so we went on a trip to Vancouver, and we got to see firsthand many game development studios. So, and we got to ask questions, we got to look around and see what it would be like to work there firsthand. And personally, I love the atmosphere and the collaboration that all the studios had, and it's, you know, looking forward to in my future.
I'm someone who's always wanted to become, who's wanted to become an indie developer for a few years, so being able to go to Vancouver and go see different little indie game studios and see the atmosphere and like collaboration that they have, shows me the path that I can take and places I can go to work, as well as it connects you to industry professionals. You get to connect to the game studios and people who work there, who then maybe you can contact again and say, hey, I want, and now they can help you get into a industry that is very competitive, especially right at this moment.
DATA has allowed me to expand not only my skills, but also my perception of the art and animation world. Before this course, I was heartset on going into the TV and movie animation industry, but thanks to DATA, so many other options have been opened up to me. It made me question that first choice that was based on the assumption that TV and movies was really the only path for animators. DATA did not only this, but also showed me alternative options for schooling, such as the Vancouver trip, where we visited an amazing post-secondary school among the variety of game and animation studios.
Thank you so much. So, in summary, DATA is an opportunity for grade 11 and 12 students to gain valuable skills in so many different areas, and really prepare them for a wide range of thriving industries, from digital art to video game design to movie production to computer science, all while earning academic credits. So I hope you can see why we all feel extremely passionate about it and are just incredibly grateful to get to be a part of this wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I can say, and I'll open it up to trustees for questions. It's interesting to see the excitement not only from you as the teacher in this class, the enthusiasm is obviously infectious, but you're such a well-spoken group in terms of talking about the impact that the class has had on you, and I think in terms of whether it's animation or speech writing, either way, I think that you'll be incredibly successful, but thank you so much for that. So I saw trustee Hickson already with a hand up, and then I'll go to other trustees. So yes, trustee Hickson.
Ever seen, ever, like going to university too?
Yes.
I just want to start asking students, what is the biggest struggle or barrier to this program from your perspective?
Can I answer?
Yes.
Um, so we are in our final project, and we are coming up on deadlines as, like, we were supposed to have more art done and figure stuff out, and we had, and I was hoping to work up through winter break, which I then realized I just couldn't have the mental energy to. So due to that, I now am in the crunch time, so I am trying to deal with the stress level of that and working a weird job that it makes it, the level of my stress levels and trying to figure out a balance of when to work and when not, and how not to push yourself to try and get everything done in a weekend when you have so much you have to do. That is probably, like, personally for me, that has been the hardest thing to overcome.
And so, Ryan, I don't think that you're alone, but I'm sure that we'd love to hear from Lucas and Taryn as well, same answer to trustee Hickson's question, if you're okay with that.
That's all.
Yeah.
I have to agree with Ryan that the time crunch that we can experience during our projects is definitely a huge struggle. Be wonderful to have more time for this program. I'm so sad that it's only a semester, but other than the time constraints, I think there's not really a lot of other struggles with this course. Ms. Berendrick makes the entire experience very pleasant, very, I won't want to say easy, it's definitely a challenging course that challenges our minds, but it does so in a healthy and productive way, at least from what I've found.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say for me, at least the scope. So you want, you have all these ideas, and you're so excited, you have so much enthusiasm for something that you want to work on, and you eventually, you get to a point where you have so much stuff in your mind that you want to create, that you don't actually have the time to make, which does create for some pretty interesting projects. Not only that it's, not in the meaning that it's bad, but in the meaning that you see some cool ideas as well, that if you had more time, you could fully, you know, make...
Bottom line is, more time.
Thank you so much. Trustee Karpuk.
Just wondering, TRU gives credits for this program, are there other post-secondary institutions that recognize some of these courses and give credits as well?
Not currently. We have an affiliation with TRU, just the Computing Science Department, but I am working with Vancouver Film School on trying to develop something as well. I have several students who end up going there, but a vast majority of them do end up going to the Computing Science Department, and it's a really great transition. They've said that getting the experience through DATA helps that transition just be so much easier, and they're flying through their courses, so prepares them really well.
Trustee Jewels.
Just a question, I think you kind of sort of answered it a little bit about how competitive the arena is for this, but out of this one semester that you've had, I'm thinking this is where ideas grow into actual games that I'm going to see in the store. So out of this semester, is there any ideas that compel you to, hey, this could actually be a seller, and even though we need to explore this a bit more?
Okay, I'll let Taryn answer first.
So, that is a funny thing. So at least in my case, I am a person who has a million ideas at once and has a hard time narrowing them down. But through this program, I have found at least two ideas that I love and would love to pursue further into actual, outside of school, big projects that could be on stores one time. So this course is definitely very good in that manner of inspiring students and just developing the developers of the future more. I'm not going to go into detail of my ideas, you will be here for it. Yeah, I'll say.
Yeah, so same idea with me. We, I have had two ideas that both could be, I feel, could be really solid games, games I would really love to develop, one being one that I start, but on a two-week project that I just didn't have time to finish, but I want to continue working on it after this course. And also, I'm someone who wants to go to the VFS, the Vancouver Film School, so they have, for their requirement, you have to write like a whole synopsis for the, to enter, to even apply for the game development program. So as someone who's already gone into that, I now have a game idea that I'm like, oh, I really want to make this a game, but I'm going to wait off on it, so I then can use it for my application to the film school, which will then, so now I have a idea that I can mull over more, and it gives me more time to think and fully build off of this world that I want to create.
Do you have anything to say, Lucas?
I don't think so.
Don't apologize at all. Any other questions? Trustee Sam.
Thanks. First of all, I don't know if you read books at all, but if you haven't, the great book, Tomorrow and Tomorrow and Tomorrow. It's great, isn't it? Yeah, so it's all about two youths who come together over coding and video game developing, and it is fantastic, but sounds like you've got the title, so just sharing that.
One of the things you described in part of the course is the coding aspect of it. And what I'm wondering is, do you feel that the coding will be taken over eventually by AI and allowing you to develop more of the creative and the artistic elements?
Well, I have, I've seen a bit of what AI can do, and I mean, like, the bare bones of it is, it's not human, right? I'm not, you know, a professional to be talking, but if you try to scrounge, like, is that the right word? Like, I don't know, if you try to take a certain line of code, and you want to use it with another one, and trying to connect them, it's really hard to kind of, you know, make them work together, because it gives you a well enough thing for a separate thing, a well enough thing for another thing, but if you're really trying to put them together, it doesn't do a great job. I mean, that's just my personal standpoint, but...
As someone who has, with teacher permission, tried to use AI to better help my workflow, I think it is very important to at least have an understanding of the programming you are asking it to do in order to troubleshoot what it means, because AI, while wonderful, cannot do everything. Even in the future, when the technology gets more advanced than possibly humans, it still needs some sort of moderator to do that. So even if AI does take our jobs, we still need people to run it, which is such a fun concept.
Trustee Hickson.
Yeah, I knew trustee Sam was going to ask that question, because I was going to ask that question. It's like whoever's going to ask the question first, and I'm just going to reframe it. Miss Berenchuk, am I getting up? Berenchuk, thank you. What is the most innovative thing that you think you brought to the classroom that we can better understand district-wide? I just think there's so much going on with what we're doing here in terms of experiential education, in terms of getting students doing what they actually want to do, something that can take themselves into a broader market. What do you think is something that could be universalized here to the district?
It's a very good question. I am a big fan of project-based instruction, so that's obviously a big part of how I teach. So just the ability to have that longer-term project where the students are all together, it is probably my favorite part of the course, and the students, I think what makes it so successful is that they get to, they get to learn a little bit of everything before this final big project, so they learn all the art, programming, game design, they make games on their own, but then when they get together in this final project, they choose a role. So we have producers, so Lucas is actually a producer on a game, we have artists, these two are both artists, and then we have programmers as well. So every team has at least one of each person in that role, and so I think just that aspect of being able to do a longer-term project, but in something specific that you are passionate about, is something that I could see being in many more courses, just having that opportunity for students to, yeah, still learn everything and come out well-rounded, but then still specialize a little bit in something they're excited about. I hope that answers your question? Okay. Oh, no.
Can I add to that?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
So as a student, I've never had a class quite like DATA, obviously, but I think what makes it so different from the others is that it doesn't just feel like a normal classroom. It feels like we're actually in an indie studio, making our own games. It feels like we're actually at work, which is not a bad thing, like some children might think work is bad. It's shown us that this sort of environment really isn't that to be afraid of, if that makes sense? It's really a welcoming and really useful environment. I have severely enjoyed it my entire time there.
Can I add to that just a little? Very well said, but just to add that part of what they were saying before about feeling that crunch and that time constraint, it's a pretty common industry thing, so I, yeah, I agree, we have modeled this program after, like, aiming to be modeled after what the industry is like, so they get that experience through those projects as well. Thanks, Taryn, for adding that.
And if I could say one thing, I was in, I did the video game maker course at Sali, and it's, again, one semester, but it's only one class, right? And you don't have a lot of time, like Ms. Berendrick said. And you don't have a lot of time, like Ms. Berendrick said, uh, in a normal, a normal kind of class to create these projects that you're looking for. Since, you know, I think we had two weeks of time to create our final project in, in the, the course at Sally. But this one, we have like, I think, not including winter break, we have four weeks. And like I, I worked over winter break since I really enjoy it. Um, and so we have lots of time just to create, you know, what we like. And I think that's, it's been like huge, right?
Yes, Ryan.
Okay, um, so I'm actually in a group within Lucas's group for our final project. And though he is the producer, um, he is just as much of a coder or a programmer as Cole, as our other um partner is, our programmer. Due to the fact that, yes, because we, they are splitting it up and because he's such a strong programmer, that we have such an intense like combat system. So because he's working on the combat systems, Cole can work our, our, on our other parts of the program. Which also, which shows why in the, if you, you can't just be like, oh, you're a, um, you're a producer, you can't do anything else, or you can't just, you're going into producer now. You can't like, you can't, there's no wiggle room or like programmer as well. Because you do need to be able to help out and you do need to be able to know how to help those, your, especially as a producer, you need to know how to help those who, the rest of your group. Yeah.
Can I add one last thing to tie it all together? I think the most uh, important part about data that sets it apart from other classes I've been in is it lets children shine with their certain skills the way they want to. So while yes, they do, she does make us do all these projects that incorporate each part. You're never just learning one thing. It also allows us the freedom to choose what we would like to focus on. Say, I'm an artist, but this course was more designed for someone interested in programming. I have still found this immensely helpful in my learning journey despite not being a programmer myself. And even despite not being a programmer, I've learned the basics of programming that can help me succeed way farther than other artists in this field.
Wow, yes, trustee Sim.
Given the collaboration that you've expressed, is, do you feel that it is best suited for in-person working the way you have? Or do you think that this could be something that could be stretched so that you could incorporate um, more students from other schools outside of just the one classroom?
Personally, I think that the, actually to having to see everybody, it's been a really good uh, kind of impact. Because we all got to collaborate, you know, not just on video games, you know, our first project. Uh, if anyone knows the, the card game, Exploding Kittens, we, we got to make our own card, right? And so it's just, you know, a piece of paper that has its own kind of abilities and it, it's kind of just a like a, an exercise, yeah. It was not like, not only team building, uh, but also you got to just like learn some like basics of like how things will work together. And I don't think, uh, we'd be able to do a lot of our team building if it wasn't that we were in person. Because we also, you know, our team did team building, we just like, you know, at lunches, we just like play games together, right?
Yeah.
Um, and we just go into another room on whiteboards, we would just brainstorm a bunch of everything that we want. And we just talk over everything, uh, you know, like, like it was actually in the, in the industry. Uh, although I think having an online like space would be like better than not. I think it would be beneficial, but I do really like the kind of a
Like in person?
Yeah, the, the in-person connection that we get.
Maya?
Yes, Ryan, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, I agree a hundred percent with how, what Lucas is saying. Because being in the classroom and being with, like I said, people who are like-minded. Yeah, you can still act the same way. It might be similar if it was all online. However, being in the classroom and being able to like bounce ideas off of each other, or you see another person taking a break and like you see something, it's like, oh, I'm interested in that, like, and so then you get to talk to them. And you can still do, be doing your work because having such a long period of work time. If you, if you take five minute, a five-minute break during the middle of day, it's not going to impact you the same way a five-minute break will take in a like normal class. So you also get connections like that, because you'll find people with similar interests and you can talk to them about that and you get to like have this like huge collaboration and like, I mean, you'll see, there'll be, there used to be like huge games, uh, like video games that like how all the, like, I would honestly say probably all the boys in the class. You would have, they would all be playing this one game for like, and it would be, you would just be able to hear oh, there's this and this and this, and it was, it's really interesting and it builds that friendship and that connection and that like family-like bond, because then you, you'll be in the classroom and you'll hear two people be squabbling like siblings. And it's great and it show, it just, it, it really is a home away from home that if it was online, you wouldn't be able to get. Unless meet, like, I don't think you would be in any, in any circumstance, you'd be able to get it. But having it online also could open it up to the wider people, to other wider like population.
Thank you, Ryan. Yes, Taryn.
Well, I do think that data could survive as for students who are online. I think it couldn't do without at least part of it being in person. Because the thing about data is it's not just a classroom, it has become a community. And I don't think you can get that sort of thing purely online, although it would open up a lot of opportunities to students who can't come in person, because there was this one girl, I remember at orientation who had gone in and had paid, but couldn't make the travel, so she hasn't appeared all year because she just couldn't. And that was really sad and I think an online option for those who can't make the drive would be amazing. But I don't think it should ever go fully online, in case that ever, that thought ever appears in your heads.
So, uh, this is a lot of information to take in, I think, for us as, as trustees and I think, um, I don't want to, I don't want to cut things short. I'm sure that trustee Hickson has more questions. Um, because I, I, I saw that, yeah, um, I, I, I think that honestly, I, I I believe I could speak for all those trustees that we could probably sit here and ask a number of questions. Um, but you've also given us a lot to think about, I think, in terms of um, different ways in terms of increasing um engagement with people who maybe aren't in this situation where they can come every day or two a full-time course. Uh, even things in terms of takeaways from what you've talked about in terms of the importance of the experiential learning part of it, mixed with you've talked about like team collaboration and finding a balance between your opinion and what others' opinions and priorities are and all of these things that are takeaways. Clearly articulate, I don't think I've seen a group where people are actually struggling to not pass off the microphone, but actually to take it. To take it and talk. Um, I think that it's a huge testament to who you are as students, but also to the leadership. Uh, not only at the school, from your teacher to your principal to um, district principal, Keenland as well, or director Keenland, sorry. And your district principal and everything. I think it's, it's a, it's an amazing thing and um, I know that this is the stuff that, that for us as trustees, we get, um, I think that we really take an interest in figuring out how uh, we can take the lessons that we learn when we, you know, we have the opportunity to listen to presentations like yours this evening, so. I am, I actually have one question and this is uh, something that I don't know that you'll have the answer to. Um, I am, I would say, love video games, I've always loved video games. Only have one hand, so when we, we went past sort of the age of uh, the Wii, um, or even like Super Nintendo started to get a little bit more intense when you had more buttons on uh, the left side of the controller. So I actually had questions about whether or not you have, um, from a, I guess uh, physical, like diverse physical abilities, if you want to call that, or people like I would love to continue gaming, but it's not something that I can actually do necessarily. So it's um, like was sort of more of the higher tech stuff, so I didn't know whether that stuff that you ever have taken into account in terms of whether you have students who have um, different uh, physical abilities, but also whether you look at game-specific uh, development for I would, whether that would be like a niche, um, I don't say a niche market, but almost, right? Like where you have people who want to be included, but maybe can't play both sides of the right-left game.
Accessibility, yeah, we've talked about accessibility.
We have talked about accessibility a lot, so uh, during data, it's not just one type of game. We've done a variety of different type of games, from platformers to up and downs to uh, three D to even my group for our final game projects, I was working on a game in VR. And because of its VR, I see your acceptance.
I'm going to ask for an, I'm going to ask for an invite to your class. Anyway, yes, go on.
Because it's VR, we've had to consider a lot of accessibility things. So common problem VR is that people with motion sickness tend to get very dizzy. So we've had to hold back on some of the things we have plans, like certain cutscenes, we can't have a still image, because then you'll start feeling nausea. And we've kept in mind this entire time of like, what if this person can't do this? We should alter for some sort of alternative that fits within our timeframe of what we can do. Um, as for your one-headed problem, there are a variety.
Too large to tackle in this evening. No, I'm just kidding, uh, go ahead.
There are a variety of games that we have made that could, of course, only be played with one hand. And honestly, I don't think that, I think that everybody should be able to get the chance to experience a good video game. Culture shouldn't be locked behind accessibility like that. And this class has really helped me consider all perspectives of what we should be considering when we're making these games.
Very cool. Uh, my invite is coming. I, I want to thank you, um. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Nixon, but I will say, uh, Lucas, Ryan, Taryn. Um, thank you so much for coming this evening. Uh, after we have a chance to applaud and congratulate you, you're able to um, we invite you to stay, but you're free to go. Um, but I will turn it over to Dr. Nixon to close the education topic for this evening.
Uh, thank you so much, Board Chair Greve, to um, to the board and to the community. I want to just say that when a lot of people hear the word data, they think that the academy is about technology. And what you've proven is that it is about technology, but it's much more about innovation. I just, some of the things you said, like Lucas, having more projects on my mind than I'm able to create. And Taryn, having a million ideas and having trouble to narrowing them down and saying that you're developing developers of the future. And Ryan, um, as far as game development, you have so many ideas, but you keep the best ones for your applications for film school. Um, I, I think that's amazing and I think that's what we want all students to be leaving here where they don't want to put down the mic, they want to take the mic and share. You've been inspiring and I appreciate you so much. I, I enjoyed this presentation. I've enjoyed coming to your class. And I think it would be one that trustees would really enjoy as well. So thank you so much.
And thank you, thank you, Ms. Berendrick as well for coming and, and presenting this evening. This was great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That, that's going to be a tough act to follow, uh, for the rest of the evening. Um, Dr. Nixon, does that conclude the education topic for this evening?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, we will move on to item next. Uh, this evening, we have no public inquiries, petitions or written presentations. Um, we have nothing from parent advisory groups, uh, or district parent advisory groups, which moves us on to reports from superintendent of schools. Item eight point one is yours, Dr. Nixon.
Uh, thank you so much. Through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board, and board policy to section four point three. The board annually evaluates the effectiveness of strategies put in place to meet district priorities and goals. Uh, and I want to say that this does include employee engagement and wellbeing. And so I will say that on December tenth, we had a wonderful meeting and it was led uh, by Associate Superintendent Widrick, who really got people talking about the action items that we need to engage in in order to really make change happen in terms of employee engagement. So I will invite um, this Associate Superintendent Widrick to share a little bit about those priority actions and evidence of success we expect to to have from this.
Thank you, Superintendent Nixon. Through you, Chair Greve, to the board. As Dr. Nixon pointed out, we met with all employee groups and as you can see on the last page of your board memo, we split up each pro- employee group and the priority actions that went along with it. There's a strong theme that each of our employee groups desire more constructive feedback on their job performance. There is strong relational and research-based evidence that shows that when our supervisors are well-positioned to provide that both in a a positive growth-oriented way, employee engagement moves forward. The other thing that was really, really strong that you can see that hits all of those employee groups is the focus on employee wellbeing. And so each of the employee groups went away thinking about what that might mean to each employee group. And how we can create a culture where people can have those conversations in a safe, growth-oriented way. That would both impact individual employees and the employee group as a whole. We're here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you very much, Associate Superintendent Widrick. Um, trustees, this agenda was presented for information purposes. Do you have any questions uh, on the uh, agenda item? Trustee Sim.
Um, thanks very much. I'm just wondering, because you're right, that there was um, quite a bit of input about getting feedback on, on job performance. What would be examples of, what would that look like so that the measurement could be tracked?
Thank you for the question, trustee Sim. I think I'll ask you to maybe just clarify a little bit more, so I give an answer that fully responds to the question.
Sure, so, and I don't know how it works, but in terms of um, growth plans, professional development plans. Um, often there's the, the metrics, um, I don't know, what's it called, simple or something? Smart goals, like, are, are, is there, is there thought about how that's implemented? Is it implemented school by school? Um, I mean, how do you know you're achieving or how do you know what the direction is if a map isn't provided? So I'm just wondering what mechanisms um, are being thought of so that this could be achieved.
Thank you very much. I understand the question now. I appreciate the clarification. Uh, thank you for the question, trustee Sim. Through you, Chair Greve, to the panel. As you can see from the exempt classification, it was very clear that our worksite supervisors as a whole um, don't want this to become another to-do in a very busy job. But the importance of it cannot be overstated, so we want to find ways with the committee that these conversations can happen as a normal course of the day. And then we would track them through future employee engagement surveys and ensure, because we are now disaggregating the data between rural and urban by employee group. We can more clearly track the data and ensure that this is happening. And when we see an outlier, like it's not going up for our Kamloops area teachers or for our rural area QP employees, we can put increased resources into those areas to ensure that it does go up either through training for our worksite supervisors, support and resources and whatever they might need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this agenda item? All right, I'm not seeing any. Uh, thank you very much, Associate Superintendent Widrick. Dr. Nixon, I'm moving on to item next, uh, is yours as well, eight point two.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board. Uh, the board is well aware that um, in the school act, there were changes resulting from Bill forty and those changes impacted the local education agreements that we have, Indigenous Education Council Terms of Reference and Schools of Choice. Uh, I will ask, uh, rather than me speak, I will ask Assistant Superintendent Mattis to address the three questions that trustees had asked, and they were these questions. Is it possible for a band to choose more than one catchment school? What happens if a band chooses a catchment school that would require transportation? And are Indigenous targeted funds able to be used for transportation?
Thank you, Superintendent Nixon. Uh, through you, Chair Greve, to the board. I would also like to thank District Principal Mike Bowden, who has joined us by Zoom tonight. I know that he was hoping to also help uh, present this memo this, this evening. Would you like me to start, Mike? So thank you so much. Inquiry number one that we were answering was, is it possible for a band to choose more than one catchment school? Uh, since our last communication to the board on October twenty-first regarding school of choice legislation, our understanding about school of choice and catchment schools changed. Initially, school of choice was interpreted as a, as a choice of catchment schools. After clarification from the Ministry of Education and Childcare in late November, a school of choice is different, we learned, from a catchment school. Designated catchment schools for first nations can remain the same. School of choice legislation allows for the first nation to designate an additional school in elementary, middle, if applicable, and secondary, that is different from their designated catchment school if they wish. With compliance of the process within the legislation. So we've listed below the catchment schools for you for each of the bands below. Uh, you will notice that the catchment schools have indeed remained the same. Mike, I don't know for this inquiry if you had anything additional to add regarding schools of choice.
Uh, not, not really. There was some confusion and the ministry acknowledged it when we met with them around um, the terminology around schools of choice and, and catchment areas. We weren't alone in that, uh, in that confusion, so it was um, clarified when we met with the ministry that catchment schools do remain the same, um, although they do remain the same, um, although they, they do of course, um, encourage districts to collaborate with, uh, with, um, local communities around what those catchment areas look like. Schools of choice under bill 40 actually meant that, um, uh, there was an allowance for, um, communities to actually designate another school of choice if they so choose. Not school of choices in our terminologies, things like the Kamloops School of Arts, et cetera, et cetera. But under the legislation, it just meant that, uh, they did have an additional option to say, we would like to choose this additional school. For whatever reason that might be, that they would communicate with the board, um, in that selection. And we would have some, uh, I guess rules around, which we already do actually informally in the, in the school district around allowing them to register within defined registration dates, uh, to those schools. I don't know if that makes sense.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll move on to inquiry number two. What happens if a band chooses a catchment school that would require transportation? We realize that bands are not choosing a catchment school as designated catchment schools for First Nations can remain the same. Catchment schools are determined by the board in consultation with the communities as well as with all partners impacted by changes in catchment and transportation is determined throughout that process. The designated school of choice by a First Nation does not impact transportation. Boards are not obliged to provide transportation to schools of choice. However, boards are encouraged to make a reasonable effort to accommodate schools of choice if possible. Do you have anything further to add?
No, just that there is an example of that. Uh, I know we do, uh, have some exceptions with, uh, when we talk about Marion Schilling Elementary. And, uh, I believe Ralph Bell, uh, Ralph Bell is the catchment school, but we still accommodate transportation to Marion Schilling School for students from the county to Secwamook, even though it's not a catchment school. It is actually not additional cost to the board or, or troubles to, um, make those transportation arrangements work. So I think that's what the meaning is, is, um, we aren't required to provide transportation to schools of choice if a band, uh, asks for a different school of choice. However, again, under, you know, things like reconciliation, if we can make it work, that, that's not an additional cost to the board, that we just try to do that and accommodate those things.
Thank you so much. And the third inquiry. Are indigenous targeted funds used for transportation or is the expectation that it would be from operating funds? District Principal Bowden and myself reached out to the Ministry of Education and Childcare. Just to clarify the use of our indigenous targeted, education targeted funds for transportation. Um, we connected with somebody named Becky. And Becky let us know on December the 3rd that targeted funds cannot be used for transportation. She shared with us the three main categories in which this funding can be used. And that was for indigenous language and culture programs, indigenous support services, and also other approved indigenous programs. The policy also states that funds are to be spent on the provision of enhanced indigenous education programs and services that are in addition to any other programs and services to which the student is eligible. Mike, do you have any last, last words to add in that?
No, just that, just that, that was just a clarification around targeted funding. In this case with bill 40 and schools of choice, it wouldn't be, it's a kind of a moot point anyways. We don't need to provide any additional, uh, funding for transportation because transportation technically is not affected by the schools of choice legislation. So that's just a clarification. Again, and it, um, we, it wouldn't cost the board any, uh, extra transportation funding things, I guess, uh, to consider because schools of choice does not, is not impact transportation.
Thank you so much. District Principal Bowden and myself are here for any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Mattis. I, I will say before I open it up to trustees, I know that it was myself actually who asked the question about targeted funds for transportation. And it's because, uh, the question came up because we were told that, um, bands could choose any school that they wanted and that we would be responsible for transportation is the way that that was presented. So I think to be clear, I don't think there's any misconception about the use of targeted funds on behalf of this board, or certainly I can speak for myself. But when it was being stated to us that, uh, there could be any selection of any school within our district, it became a different issue if we were being responsible for transportation. So I just want to be really, um, mindful of the way that that question, uh, was asked and the purpose of it. Obviously, uh, I wouldn't have asked it if, um, the information that we were given in question number two, uh, this evening, um, was given to us previously. Transportation wouldn't be an issue. So, um, trustees, do you have any questions or comments for, um, associates, oh, sorry, Assistant Superintendent Mattis or District Principal Bowden on this agenda item? All right. I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Nixon, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board. So the Board of Education is responsible for the district strategic plan and results and ensures, uh, that they have an ability to evaluate the effectiveness of the key priorities and strategies through multiple reporting mechanisms. One such mechanism is mid-year reporting by families of schools, and it has changed to be more of a conversation than a presentation. Uh, this has been successful for the last two years. And at this stage, I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Riley, to provide a little bit more information about the process this year.
Uh, thank you so much, Superintendent Nixon. Through you, Chair Greve, to the board. Uh, and thank you to Director DeFaire for her work in the preparation of this memo. Starting in the background, each year trustees and school leadership teams have an opportunity to discuss work that moves student learning forward. In the 22, 2022, 2023 school year, the Learning Leadership Council recommended a move to a mid-year review rather than a final year end report presentation. This current mid-year review process has been well received by trustees, senior team members, principals and vice principals. The process has allowed school teams to discuss their learning plan goals and the strategies developed to meet these goals. To better respond to the action items within the individual school learning plans, feedback is gathered from the, from the participants and audience members following the mid-year review session. Flip over the page to page 30, under the status section. This year, we will continue with the mid-year review format that has been our practice for the past two years. Calendar invites will be sent to all trustees and senior team members. The structure will continue to be a carousel model as in the past. Two combined families of schools will host each session. These combined school teams will divide into two groups. Each group one member will host a major review at an individual school table. Group two will act as an audience members along with trustees and senior team members. Trustees and senior team members will move to a table to engage in a major review conversation with the school administration. Each session is 10 minutes long. At the end of the 10 minutes, the audience will be invited to move to a new table for a second, third, and this year a fourth session. After four moves, we will take a 10-minute break. As we reassemble, group one will become audience members and group two will host major review discussions. Again, trustees, senior team members and group one will be audience members and visit four schools slash tables for 10 minutes each. So on pages 30 and 31, there are the schedules for each family of school. Uh, the first one is Norbrock and Westside family on Tuesday, February 11th, starting eight 45, the Henry Groob. Uh, and then on Wednesdays, North Thompson, Logan Lake and Chase family. And that is that starting at nine 15, a little bit later, just to allow for some travel time. And then the third, uh, family is KSA, Sally Valley View and South Camp families on Thursday, starting at eight 38 45. We have endeavored to ensure that trustees know, uh, which of their schools they represent and what time, or sorry, what, um, date those are happening on. Uh, and then if they've seen other schools, they're able to see additional schools if time allows. And then just on page 32, under feedback, uh, just a reminder that feedback is part of the major review. As I said earlier, this will be gathered by paper survey format. As trustees are visiting stations, they'll be asked to consider the questions below to inform the feedback survey at the end of each session. Uh, this information is for, um, this memo source for information to the board, and I'm here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Riley. Uh, trustees, do you have any questions on this agenda item that's been presented for information purposes? All right, uh, seeing none. Um, Dr. Nixon, I will turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Riley. So through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board. As the board is well aware, uh, in accordance with the Ministry of Education and Childcare's framework of enhanced, for enhanced student learning order, uh, the board submits an annual report to the minister uh, in, in accordance with the requirements for the enhancing student learning report order. On September 9th, the board approved the enhancing student learning report, which we call in our district, the district learning plan. On December 20th, former Superintendent Chris Vandermark, one of the Ministry of Education and Childcare's evaluators discussed the report with me. And I have highlighted the strengths and the areas that we are going to focus on for continued growth. In terms of continuous improvement, this continues to be a strength of the district. Defining how we engage in the continuous improvement cycle is in place, and it includes the family of schools cycle that we just heard about in the last report. As far as data and evidence, we clearly identify areas of growth based on the results of the data analysis. And we really connect closely with those areas of growth in our district priorities and strategies. Future reports, uh, as discussed with the evaluator, uh, really he would like us to look at our local assessments and priority populations and consider whether we can disaggregate that data to parallel what's, we're given as from the province. The strength for alignment. We are very strong in overall alignment between our school and our district learning plans. And so a comment made as a promising practice to share with other districts, uh, was that our school lead teams in every school tend to get together in families of schools. They discuss their learning plans. They look at ways to improve. And this is an ongoing approach, uh, to sharing. In terms of a couple other areas that are strengths, but also areas to improve, we do focus on children and youth in care. Future reports would benefit from additional evidence to say what is working well with this particular population of students. And finally, the focus on students with disabilities and diverse abilities. We present universal strategies that benefit our students. And we would benefit from some more specificity with respect to the strategies that help, uh, this particular population of students the most. And that gives you a high level as a board as an overview. And of course, I'm happy to take and answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. Uh, trustees, do you have any questions on this agenda item that's been presented for information purposes this evening? Yes, trustee Sim.
I just want to go to point number one. Future reports will benefit from the district's commitment to further disaggregate local assessment results for priority populations. What would that look like?
Through you, Board Chair Greve, to trustee Sim. We have a primary reading assessment. Um, it's been in place in our district for, uh, I don't want to say a decade, but it would seem to be as close to a decade, if not a bit longer. It is well respected and used provincially. We currently do not report on, for example, indigenous versus non-indigenous students who live on reserve. That is a population that we've been asked to consider. Children and youth in care is another population that we've been asked to consider. So that is what it would look like. It would provide greater details about those specific populations in the area of primary reading through our local assessment reporting as one example.
Yes.
And just supplemental to that is, would that reporting then be made public or would that be used more for operational and then reporting to the ministry? Cause that seems really quite granular.
Through you, Board Chair Greve, to trustee Sim. Uh, we at this time do report publicly, uh, and we find that although it's going to be granular, we are required to report on that same information through the Ministry of Education Framework for Enhancing Student Learning Order. So because they require that, it makes sense that we probably, in, in discussing it with our, um, team would probably look at the primary results because we could then parallel them a little bit, um, to the intermediate and secondary results. Uh, we don't get into naming specific students. It's always about a cohort of students, um, at a time. So I think from that angle, it would allow us to parallel the two sets of results.
Thank you very much for that, Dr. Nixon. I guess my one question is that with our, um, data dashboard, uh, do we have the ability to, to look at the, uh, groups that have been identified for us with, like within our existing structure?
Thank you very much, Board Chair Greve. Through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board, and I would look at Director Keenline potentially to answer that. But I do know that Ed Plan Insight, uh, and we have, uh, lots of data dashboard information already does that work? If I'm not mistaken, we just don't report on it. I'm getting the nod.
Thank you. The, the all-important nod. Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Keenline, and thank you, Dr. Nixon. Does that conclude this agenda item for you?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. Uh, moving on to item next, the United Way Campaign Results, 8.5.
Uh, thank you. So through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board and board policy two. The board recognizes students, staff and community members, and the staff have contributed annually to the United Way uh, for the last 20 years because the United Way is such a highly valued partner and offers programs that directly impact our students and families. We just want to take this time, and I know the report details all the activities done, but just take the time to thank staff and alert the board that, uh, we did beat our goal from last year. We, uh, raised $10,894. And, uh, thank you to Director Eisner, who really did a good job of sharing the programs that support our communities, providing those stories weekly, uh, just enabling us to see the good work of the United Way. And really, um, thank you also to our employee executive groups, QPKTTA and KTPBPA, who fully supported us in communicating to their members and sharing through social media, some of the programming that, um, United Way supports. So it was just really for you to be aware and to let the community and the public know that, um, we still really, uh, appreciate what the employee groups do. And as well, the partner of the United Way has been a valued partner for so long and continues to be.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. Trustees, do you have any questions, uh, on this agenda item that was presented this evening for information purposes? All right, seeing none. Uh, thank you very much for that report and actually like it separated out from the other good news, um, that we have within, within the reports this evening. Item next is yours as well, Anti-Racism Action Plan Progress Report.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, through you, Board Chair Greve, to the board. So the board oversees initiatives that impact student success. And in our district strategic plan, the board is committed to, uh, the cultural and identity priority where every student is encouraged to develop a sense of who they are, to feel welcome, safe and included in our schools and to express their identities without discrimination or racism or homophobia. In this report, I summarize the history of the development of the human rights student leadership, uh, groups, as well as the development of a survey and the plan that was originally started by Assistant Superintendent Mochikis. Uh, her efforts and leadership inspired Minister Rashan Singh at the time to unveil a provincial anti-racism action plan in our district. Since that time, District Principal Carmichael and Assistant Superintendent Mattis have taken on the responsibility for this continued work, and they work so very closely with District Principal Bowden as well. So I will turn it to them to just share a little update on where we're at with that plan.
Good evening, everyone. I will always ask, can you hear me? We're good. I know we're January 13th, but happy new year, everybody. And I would just like to extend the offer, District Principal Bowden, with, you've got a little more experience. Would you like to, uh, begin the introduction of our progress and hand off to me where you deem appropriate?
Certainly, I, I can do that, uh, District Principal Carmichael. Chair Greve, trustees, it's, uh, our pleasure to give you a, a uh, update on the district action plan around anti-racism. And just to put it into context, um, we are fortunate, uh, through the initial work with, um, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Mochikis at the time around this project and the attention that it's gotten from the, um, Ministry of Education and Childcare and, uh, and at the time, uh, Minister Singh. We, uh, we have expanded on that, in fact, to the point that, uh, we, um, had the attention of, uh, the Ministry of Education and Childcare, and they, they generously contributed a significant, um, uh, grant to allow our, the work of our Indigenous Student Council to expand as well as some of the work that, uh, we're going to talk about today on where we're at. Excuse me, I'm still fighting, which is why I'm online, fighting a little bit with a, a cold, and I didn't want to go and spread my germs to you folks. So hopefully my voice will hold out. So this is just. So this is just an update of where we're at with the project and and just to let you know briefly, I know you have the memo in front of you, kind of some of the things that we're doing. At the time, we had conversations around how do we structure or frame the action plan moving forward that's going to be impactful and include all of the voices concerned. One of the things we talked about is including the four key areas of focus, which is policy and governance, the pedagogical core, the learning environment, as well as individual student context, and what does that look like with anti-racism? And I know my part here is is the Indigenous focus around that, and of course, that's what piqued the interest also with the Ministry of Education and Childcare, as they felt that that was a unique perspective in anti-racism that needed to be at least pulled out and needed a little bit more focus on. So that's how we with District Principal Carmichael and myself and the and the team, as well as Assistant Superintendent Mattis have moved forward in that. We did meet with, well, maybe I'll just start District Principal Carmichael with the kind of the status around those four key areas, because it kind of defines what we've done so far and where we're at, and maybe you can jump in. But policy and governance, we have reviewed the administrative procedures around student code of conduct and student discipline, and made sure that our actions around anti-racism either complied with those administrative procedures, or at least had some conversations around what needed, what we needed to tweak to make it fit the anti-racism action plan moving forward. We talked about things of ensuring alignment with the B.C. Human Rights Code, Dripa, the Aboriginal Education Enhancement Agreement, which we just signed last February, and other equity-focused legislation. And we're we're actually in the process right now of aligning some of the work with the new provincial action plan, which is going to be released this January. In fact, I might, I might, it might have already been released, but we're going to definitely look out at making sure that we're aligning with provincial expectations and goals and actions around this this very important topic. Things like the Pedagogical Core with is our, which is our instructional practices. So looking at how do we integrate this into the curriculum? How do we make sure that we are focused on the Indigenous piece, because that is a priority for the province and a priority for us too? We have created an anti-bullying guide, which has been vetted through all seven communities, Indigenous communities already, and approved, so that's been sent out, sent out. We've done Student Voice, which is of course very important, because they're the ones impacted. So we work really closely with our Indigenous student population, as well as our just the School District 73 Indigenous Student Council. We've invited several districts, up to 10, in our Indigenous Summit, and I believe I've presented things around the Indigenous Summit to the Board of Education, including that we have a video that kind of defines what that was, and they came up with an action plan that was sent to the ministry as we partnered with the ministry in that. I don't know, District Principal Carmichael, if you want to talk about your work with Dana Napier and Palo around the Immigration Society?
Yes, thank you, District Principal Bowden. You were on a roll. I hope you were just going to keep going. I do want to acknowledge the work by District Principal Bowden around his framework for approaching a guide to anti-racism and discrimination in our schools. He's put that through a lens of being culturally sensitive and aware, and it's also founded a great foundation for work to provide our administrators with non-Indigenous racism as well. So some of the work I've engaged in is meeting with Corporal Dana Napier and Paulo Begit from the Council of Immigration Services. Because again, some of my learning has also been that distinctions approached, distinctions-based lens approach to racism, that every individual that faces racism or discrimination is different. It has its own context and its own story and their own lived experience. So working with Paulo Begit, he is, he's starting to work within schools, designing presentations, starting with our elementary schools. To, and kind of an intermediary, because with some of our students from out of country or new to our community, they're very apprehensive about coming to school leadership, working with RCMP to bring forward racism-based experiences that they've had. So Paulo is kind of working with RCMP, working with schools, myself, and we're starting to work, have him work with schools to address lived experiences of immigrants to our community. Approaches to have conversations around diversity, equity, and inclusion. He works quite closely with the Human Rights Tribunal in B.C., so he's brought a wealth of information that we're starting to be able to get into schools. He's currently done work at David Thompson and is starting to work with AE Perry on that. And then the work of Dana, Corporal Napier from the RCMP. We're really trying to approach it from a prevention piece, so the education awareness around the impacts of racism and discrimination to an intervention. So what is it that we can do to further our education around that? And provide some skills and some tools for our students and our school leadership and counselors to support these students, as well as the students that are perpetuating or in being involved in these acts. And the RCMP lens is really just the what potential consequences may happen as you get older. So she's more just for the criminal code aspect of it. Just moving ahead, taking a look at the individual student piece, oh, pardon me, a little bit of the other work I have done is I shared, recently shared, Learning to Be an Anti-Racist, which comes out of the Equitas Foundation. It's a B.C. and Canadian-based resource. It's eight modules, and in working with some high school counselors around their experiences of working with students with racism, it's intended to be a consistent approach and a consistent language and framework for our counselors and teachers to use. So we're trying to land on, there's a lot of resources out there. We're trying to choose a few that are consistent, that support our our counselors with it. So that went out in November, and then currently, based on the work that Assistant Superintendent Mochikis did with Student Voice Groups, some of the work that Dr. Nixon picked up, it came into me, I continued the work of forming a survey, working with safer schools and doing the best. A survey is still a survey, I'll just admit that, but trying to tailor it in a way that's accessible to students to share their experiences. And also to do our best to frame those questions in a way that doesn't create trauma from lived past experiences. So it is currently out in the hands of Westside and Valley View teaching staff right now. One staff started to run the survey last week. We chose those two schools as they were the schools that did a lot of work with Assistant Superintendent Mochikis gathering that student voice data. So it is being enrolled through some Social Justice, Psychology, Social Studies, eight courses. It's also being housed in one of our Indigenous education workers that can, as students roll in and they're having situations and conversations, it's a potential to gather student voice there. And as well, I have it out of a counselor's office too, when they're working with students. So just a different way to try to plant the survey in different places to get student voice. And from that, we're hoping just to, again, reiterate, take a look at the questions we're asking, take a look at maybe the questions we haven't asked that could help inform the development of our action plan moving forward. Anything else, District Principal Bowden?
Just quickly, I just want to add the, to, you know, the conversation around the importance and the support from this board and this district around, you know, centering student voice in this work. And the diver, the the distinctions-based approach to it. We truly are leading, and by we, I mean our students, or these students in the work, and it's brought the attention of several districts. In fact, with the upcoming student summit, they want to have further conversations around anti-racism. We have students outside of our region, or districts outside of our region, wanting to involve their students. Our students here are truly leaders in this work, and they're they're drawing the attention of provincial and other district folks around, you know, centering their voices around anti-racism and moving this forward and making a difference. I can't state that enough, and really, you know, we, District Principal Carmichael and I sit here, and as well as Assistant Superintendent Mattis to to share with you some of the progress. You know, really, it is the hard work of students. They're engaged. This is an important topic to them. They they think this, and I believe them, this will truly make a difference in outcomes for marginalized students and and their successes in our school system. You know, it's really, if we talk about tipping points, the tipping point is they've taken this on. They believe and trust that the school district is listening to them, and this is authentic work. And, you know, I can't be more proud of the students and the conversations, even in our January 8th, when we had a joint meeting with the administrators, we had a panel of students that talked about and expressed their courageous voices in in making a difference here. This is going to be impactful, and I just look forward to continuing on with this work. Cooks Jim.
Thank you, Cooks Jim, as well. This report is respectfully submitted as information. We are here for questions.
Thank you very much, District Principals Carmichael, Bowden, and Assistant Superintendent Mattis. Trustees, do you have any questions on this agenda item that's presented for information purposes this evening? Yes, trustee Sim.
Thanks. It was a tremendous amount of information, and I really appreciated elevating the discussions around non-Indigenous racism. I think that that's really important, especially as we grow more and more diverse in our populations. And so it's almost like learning the lessons and elevating what we've done with the First Nations and expanding, you know, those those formats. For the January 8th, who, what student voice was was that a collection of?
Yes, thank you, trustee Sim. It was a, it was part of a a joint meeting between administration, School District 73 administration, and the Indigenous Education Council. They've been asking that for for a number of years, so particularly was talking about things around the local education agreements and the enhancement agreement. And the enhancement agreement, the School District 73 enhancement agreements contain some specific, I guess, goals and action plans around addressing anti-racism. So the panel, even though it wasn't specific to the anti-racism action plan of the of the school district necessarily, the panel was made up of Indigenous students, because that was the focus of that joint meeting, and the conversation was around the impacts of the school system on Indigenous students, according to their perspectives, the the positives and the negatives, and part of that was around conversations around the the things like anti-racism and, and of course, I guess systemic anti-racism and and their student outcomes and their thoughts around that.
So supplemental is the surveys that were referenced in your report. Is that going to expand the types of voices that we're hearing, part of student voice? And replicating that, because I hear the success that we've had, but it almost sounds like we're at the, are we at the point where we're going to, you know, make it bigger?
Thank you for your question, trustee Sim. Yes, that is the intent, and so with these two schools, it's to, the survey is also being run in their diversity clubs, which attract quite a variety of students, quite a few new new students to community from other countries, students that identify GSA, SOGI, Indigenous students, non-Indigenous students. So we are doing our best to try to capture a wide spectrum of student voice, and then based on these two schools, take a look at any revisions that might be needed and expand it further.
And if I may, just a ground, maybe?
Yes, I will just see whether or not there are other questions before I take separate questions, not supplemental. Go ahead, trustee Sim.
And then so so with that, and it is, I mean, it is really, you know, great what this is doing. And so I'm wondering, as we continue to widen these conversations, is there going to be education on unintended question, unintended consequences of microaggressions? And how that may come across with with people not even knowing, like, is there a part of that that conversation?
Thank you for the question, trustee Sim. Yes, and so part of, part of my learning, trying to get my head around this very complex subject has landed around unconscious bias. So having students become more and more aware of their lived experience, not a blame, but when we all have a different lived experience, we all have different cultures that we come from, values and beliefs, and and really trying to work hard, not going blame and shame, going awareness. Because one of the most important things I, when I think about this work around racism, is accessibility and creating accessibility to actually have this conversation. And it makes me think of some of the work around reconciliation, where people know it's important work, but they're really nervous. They're really apprehensive about entering into a conversation in fear that they get it wrong. So we want to keep our focus, I don't want to say narrow, but specific, and unconscious bias is one of those areas where it brings up ideas around microaggression. And so some of the work in formulating the survey took a look at unconscious bias, took a look at microaggressions, took a look at all those things, trying to create questions that didn't create shame or blame, but awareness about why you might have or share a certain view or think that's okay. So and some of the other work and resources that we've shared out with school counselors, it's around short, I'll call them anti-racism videos or clips, that they work with students that have been involved in acts of racism or discrimination to try to create an understanding and the impact of it. District Principal Bowden and I have had conversations where we genuinely feel probably, I'll pull a number up, the majority, 80% of racism is quite often uninformed ignorant comments. 20%, I'm just making these numbers up, is malicious, right? Like, it's really the great, many of the cases I dealt with as a school administration, it was really just ignorance. And students would engage in those conversations, and we found parents would be engaged in these conversations. So it is about trying to address where we come from, our own understanding and helping students with that as well.
And if I could just add to that really quickly, we have done some of this work already, and just through the Indigenous end lens, and but this, we are planning on expanding this. And I've had conversations with District Principal Carmichael around microaggressions. It is addressed in the Indigenous Focus Anti-Racism Guide that is sent out, has been sent out to all schools and reviewed by the Indigenous Education Council. So those those are being taken into consideration, and we do already have action plans in in progress around things that were sent out actually just before the new year to schools on some ideas on how to have conversation, professional development, conversations around microaggressions, things like how do we approach in appropriate ways in dealing with ignorance and and using the learning lens around addressing anti-racism? And a lot of that, again, has been has been the the ask and paying attention to street data and student voice on how to address this. So students are actually helping frame those conversations around microaggressions and how to roll that out in policy and and instructional practices in schools.
Yes, trustee Jules.
So mine's not so much of a question, but I recall, you know, being my second term a couple of years back, of seeing something from the students saying, doing things with us, not without us. And I think now coming to this report and where we're at now, you know, it was the right words to hear for us to hear as adults, looking from, trying to look at a student perspective. But for me to try to look from a student perspective, I'm looking back on my time when I was in high school compared to how the time is now, which, two different variables, right? But the racism is But the racism is still there, right? So but back in our time, we weren't included in the conversation. So I'm very happy that the district has listened to the students in aspects of how to approach this and whose voice is most important in this. So I look forward to how this rolls out further within the district. You mentioned in your, in putting the survey out to several classrooms, going to Valley and West Side Secondary Schools and whatnot. So I'm really looking forward to how the expansion of that survey goes and the data that you get back and the and what student voice you hear coming back to us for that. So Cooks Jim, for the work that's done.
Yes, Trustee Carpack.
One of the things that you mentioned that's really important for the students is that they believe that we're going to action their concerns. What types of actions are the students looking for from the board?
Maybe I can answer that because we've already gone down that road with the the summit. So I think the actions are just enabling the leadership from students and enabling their authentic voice in in things like supporting the summit, supporting the work that they put to to putting a report that that we're actually looking at the report and they see the requests in that report in things like the Anti Racism Indigenous Guide. We share that with them, so they they see that. In fact, we just had the panel here on January eighth, and the students, at least the Indigenous Student Council is saying, can we can we look at that? You know, are the districts, and we did record it. And we're going to roll that out with two administrators so that they can review that street data. So I just, I just think because there's been a I guess, a culture of of not trusting from students that were listening to them. So how the board can support that, Trustee Jules, is supporting it through through opportunities like this where we, the board is looking at plans that are that are generated and and seen as as important steps in in the actions that we take next. I don't know, you know, you can see the passion in them and in the courage in their conversations around this topic, because they do believe that this board and even the province is taking notice now on what they have to say and and that they're important and their words are important. Cooks Jim.
I'm not seeing any other questions. I have I have a question. And then before, and then if there's other things that come up before we close this agenda item. So one of the things I think, if I understand correctly, we've seen a bit of a shift over the last number of years with our our student population, where we have more culturally diverse backgrounds. We see increase in English as a second language with different languages that have come into our district as well. And different areas where there seems to be maybe more like more concentrated, where we have people who may be new to Canada and things like that, who are in in our system. Do we have? When you're looking at rolling out surveys like this, do we actually have, because I know, if I'm understanding correctly from what I'm hearing, some of the parents of our students don't speak English as well. And I'm wondering if we actually offer this feedback from students in different languages. So when we're looking at putting a survey forward, are we actually asking in different languages where we can ensure that the questions that were being sought in a survey are being understood and that the guardians of our students are able to support in the responses to those surveys as well in a way that we can actually take that data around what their experiences within our district?
Thank you for the question, Chair Greve. Short answer, no. But thank you for that. And that is part of the work. Working with Paulo Begit from the Council Immigration Society, he's looking for ways that we can bridge that. And so I, and and he is beyond passionate about what he does. So I very much appreciate that question, and it'll be something I can take forward to Paulo and work with Paulo. And in the second iteration, and there will be other iterations of this, incorporate that and find a group to do that with as well. So.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. And I really appreciate what you were saying about unconscious bias, because I do think that we sort of, again, even acting on the assumption that people understand the questions that not acting on the assumption, but sometimes we assume people understand the questions that we're asking and not recognizing the nuances behind. If English isn't your first language, or if you're, you know, new to community and stuff like that, that maybe you're not understanding the nuances of the the questions that are being asked or the importance of actually garnering that type of feedback for having a voice and the importance of how we can impact change through our district. So thank you so much for for the work. Are there any other questions? All right, I'm not seeing any. Dr. Nixon, thank you so much for this agenda item. Dr. Nixon, I will turn that back over to you.
Just a big thank you to the team. So Assistant Superintendent Mattis, District Principal Carmichael, and Bowden, it's been a lot of work, and I know that you're going about it the right way with our partners. So thank you. So the next item is the board is committed, of course, to understanding the stories of success in schools that paint a picture of how learning environments and opportunities support students to thrive. On January ninth, school and district leaders did take time to write those small stories that yield deep insights into the good work being done in schools. And it's included here as a regular item for the board and the community. And it just highlights some of the things that were happening prior to winter break. And then just at the startup of the year, I'm happy to take any questions the board may have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. The Good News Agenda item was circulated for information purposes. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Nixon on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. Um, Dr. Nixon, I know I got all excited in camera. No, there's still the superintendent's report. You see, I didn't turn the page. No, item next, eight point eight, superintendent's report.
Very good. And this is, of course, based on Board Policy Twelve, part of the board's evaluation structure, where I do monthly reports periodically to just share what I am doing. So from November twenty fifth to January third, I provided a list of my activities. And of course, I'm always happy to take any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustees, do you have any questions for Dr. Nixon on the superintendent's report? All right, seeing none. Dr. Nixon, does that conclude your agenda items for this evening?
It does. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Moving on to item next, reports from Secretary Treasurer, Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon, I will turn it over to you for nine point one.
Chair Greve, through you to the boards, included in the green embargoed package tonight is the financial report for November thirtieth, as well as the amendment to the Budget Reduction Plan. Under Board Policy Two, rule of the board, the board shall approve the annual budget and allocation of resources to achieve desired results, including the strategic priorities. And the the purpose of the report is to provide an update on the financial results for two thousand twenty four, twenty five, as of November thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, and the Budget Reduction Plan, and also to provide a long term view of our internally restricted reserves in order to replenish them. The budget comparison is showing you a comparison of the budget from October thirty first to November thirtieth. Overall, the budgeted surplus of five hundred and sixty two thousand dollars is consistent with the last time the board saw the budget. There has been changes to revenue, salaries and benefits, and supplies and services as we've integrated the before and after school childcare programs budgets. But for a net increase in the operating surplus of two dollars. That budgeted surplus of five hundred and sixty two thousand dollars would allow the the board to have internally restricted reserves at the end of June of two million fourteen thousand, which is point nine six percent of the operating budget. Looking at our actual financial results. When we're looking at these, we're comparing to this time last year, both the percentage of the budget that's used or the revenue that's received and the comparable percentages for last year. Looking at our revenue at November thirtieth, sixty five million three hundred thousand dollars is thirty one percent of the annual budget. One and a half percent higher than this time last year. So we're remaining consistent with our last report. We do want to draw attention that the provincial grant confirmation, which is typically made in December by the ministry, has been delayed and is expected at the end of this month. Salaries and benefits overall, fifty nine million five hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars is thirty two point one one percent of the annual budget, which is point eight of a percent higher than the same time last year. So and salaries and benefits, of course, is a level, or is an area that we're continually monitoring. Very close level. Within our salary costs, two areas that we reviewing are our educational assistance, which includes the CEAs and IEWs. So at two million nine hundred and nineteen thousand, they're twenty six point two percent of the budget, which is one point one percent higher than this time last year. And our support staff at eight million three hundred and forty thousand, at thirty five point six three percent, they're point three five percent higher than this time last year. A part of that is the number of work days between the beginning of school and November thirtieth. There were two additional days this year compared to the comparable timeframe last year. But over the course of the year, there are the same number of workdays. We're expecting those to even out. Looking at our replacement costs, which are our TOCs and our casual relief staff, right, two million nine hundred and eighty three thousand dollars, which is twenty eight point seven nine percent of the annual budget, which is just over three percent higher than this time last year. Again, that's an area that we need to continually monitor quite closely. Within our replacement costs, our TOCs are at twenty eight point one percent of their annual budget compared to twenty five point four percent last year. So two percent, two point seven percent, two point seven percent higher. Custodial relief budget is at forty one point three percent compared to twenty five and a half percent at this same time last year, fifteen point eight percent higher. And our CEAs, the relief budget is at thirty four point four percent compared to thirty point eight percent at this time last year, so three point six percent higher. Benefits at eleven million three hundred and ninety four thousand are at thirty three point two three percent or three point six seven percent higher than this time last year. Part of that is the change in processing, expensing the benefits invoices each month as they're received. But if this continues, we expect to have to increase the budget for benefits by approximately seven hundred thousand. Looking at our supplies and services at the end of November, eight million four hundred and twenty six thousand dollars was spent, or thirty four point seven five percent of the annual budget, which is three point six three percent higher, sorry, lower than this time last year. Within supplies and services, there's three areas we want to draw the board's attention to, facility repairs and maintenance, student transportation, and the International Student Program. Facility repairs and maintenance at the end of November was one million seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars spent, or forty eight point seven five percent of the annual budget, which is four point seven eight percent higher than this time last year. Superintendent Nixon and I met with Director McDonald to review. Part of this was the timing of summer projects, which happened or budgeted for, but happened in the summer, and so they aren't recognized evenly throughout the school year. And the timing of the November report, this was one month into the department's Budget Reduction Plan. Director McDonald has indicated that he'll be within budget by the end of the fiscal year. Looking at student transportation at six hundred and seventy one thousand dollars, we're at twenty eight point six eight percent of the annual budget compared to twenty seven point nine one percent last year. In meeting with Director Chris Johnson, part of this increase is the timing of purchase of studded tires for the school bus fleet. She has indicated that she believes to be in budget by the end of the year. And the International Student Program at one million three hundred and two thousand at the end of November is at forty six point three seven percent of the annual budget, two and a half percent higher than this time last year. Dr. Nixon and I met with District Principal Brewer and Assistant Superintendent Carson to go over the International Student Program costs. Part of the reason that they're at a higher percent spent at this point compared to last year is the number of home stay students they had in the first semester of the school year compared to the second. So they're expecting by the end of the second semester that those home stay costs will be within budget. In order to meet our Budget Reduction Plan, we're closely monitoring our salaries for education assistance and our support staff, our replacement costs for all our employee groups, as well as the supplies and services with both the individual departments and on a school basis. Looking forward for the remainder of the school year. We've been working with Secretary Treasurer Blesstuck from Abbotsford. His point's for us to consider that we need all salaries and benefits and supplies budget holders to remain on budget in order to meet the budgeted surplus of five hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. So we'll continue to do our monthly budget reviews with both the budget holders and with the board. And he's encouraged us to continue to monitor the CEA and support staff salaries to ensure that the additional days are the cause for being at a higher percent spend at this point last year, which we have done work on confirming. And looking his third point is to, his recommendation was to decrease our budget for supplies and services closer to the spending of our two thousand twenty two, twenty three school year of twenty two million seven hundred and fifty six thousand. So we have continued to work with budget holders to reduce their supplies and services, but we have not yet met that twenty two point eight million. With our potential cost overruns in relief and benefits, we could be approximately one point nine million dollars over the budgets in those categories. And we have mitigation strategies that we're enacting in order to deal with them. So one of our risks is that our salaries and replacement costs, as well as our benefits, appear to be tracking over budget. That's one of the first things we'll be doing is working with school leaders. Any school requested TOCs will be routed through me for approval prior to the cost being incurred, just to ensure that there's a budget available for each of those requests. We've asked non enrolling teachers, district level staff to work point six in schools to replace teachers who are away between February first and June thirtieth in order to offset release relief costs. With QP, we've continued the strategy of reviewing vacancies for retirements or resignations, and if possible, delaying filling them. We've also begun work on developing an LOU for a responsible adult, which would help this relief for the CEAs. And over the winter break, as custodians, for custodians who were on approved leave, we did not replace them with relief staff at that time, as students, school was not in session, so that extra cleaning was not necessary. And in order to address the rising benefit costs, we're going to rely on our additional CEF funding that should be confirmed by the ministry this month. In order to address the potential for expenses in our facilities, transportation, and international student program, we'll continue to meet with the directors of those departments and the district principal of international to review the budgets and ensure that those allocations are not exceeded. Of course, those mitigation strategies are in order to maintain the budgeted surplus of five hundred and sixty two thousand, which would mean at the end of June, the internally restricted reserves of just over two million dollars or point nine six percent of the operating fund revenues. We need to continue to build those reserves to make sure that they're available to us as a strategy for risk mitigation in the future. And this report did come with a draft recommendation that the board approves the amendments to the Budget Reduction Plan as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that, Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon. I'm wondering if there is any additional or just words that Secretary Treasurer. Oh, my gosh, Velastik, I can never pronounce that last name. Brave Velastik was wants to offer before we look at entertaining emotion, if there's anything that you wanted to to add.
Sure, I I just think that I'd like to to mention to the board that it is important to keep monitoring and be in a position to potentially adjust and sort of be nimble in the next number of months as as this fiscal year winds down. And I would say that And I would say that if the opportunity arises to make further reductions or to take advantage of further reductions, that would be a really important thing to do. Being able to build a, a big enough surplus in, in this current year and replenish your, your, your accumulated surplus and some of your reserve balances simply is going to give you the opportunity to relieve some financial pressures in next year's budget. It's going to help you to potentially withstand any, any potential, you know, financial or other budget issues that may arise in, in the coming budget year in twenty five, twenty six. But more importantly, I think it will give the board and the district a reset in their budget. And that, so you can build a, a more sustainable budget going forward, starting in the twenty five, twenty six year.
Sorry, I'm just making sure my mic is on. I apologize. Thank you very much, Secretary Treasurer Velestak. It is very, I, I want to thank you for joining us this evening and, and giving us that insight as well. So trustees, this agenda item was presented with a recommendation attached that Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon had, had put up on the screen. I'm wondering if there are any questions before we look at entertaining a motion this evening? Yes, Trustee Kang.
Thank you. I guess my question is more about the bigger picture, and I think it's something important that we need to kind of talk about, and just wondering, from all the reductions and stuff that have occurred in the budget, how have the students been impacted? Is there anything that the Board of Education should be apprised of? Is there big changes that have happened that are affecting our students in the classroom or in the school buildings?
Reduction, sorry, thank you for the question, Trustee Kang, through you, Chair Greif. The reductions that have been made so far this year have been based on the district level budgets, so not impacting students. Schools still receive their full current year school supply allocation, so their whole allocation of funding that they would receive each year, year to year. Sorry, our intent has been to keep the impact away from the classroom.
No, and I thank you for that because I think that's something important the public needs to understand, just for some of the conversations I've had, is that impacts in the classroom having very, very minimal. So thank you for that.
Dr. Nixon, is there anything that you wanted to add to that as well?
Sure, I, I will just add that students remain our top priority when we're making recommendations to the board. And I think even through Secretary Treasurer Velestak, as well as Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon, we have been mindful about assessing the certified educational assistance support in the schools, ensuring that there is a check in with leaders every month. We had a check in today. I think that it is, we're coming out of a very challenging time, and we are not yet there. We see that. But we also know that with the help of non-enrolling teachers or district teachers supporting relief costs, that is going to really help the supports in classrooms, Trustee Kang, and to the board. And I think it's important just to recognize that every single decision we're making is to ask the question, how do we ensure that students are taken care of and that they're learning and that we're doing so with as minimal impact as we can. Thank you.
I don't, I'm not seeing any other questions. Yes, Trustee Sam.
Um, so just to follow up on Trustee King, so what I am hearing though is that the, the, the board and, you know, with the support of, of your staff, we've actually put more supports in despite some of these challenges, so the CEAs and that. So it's been a mindful, what you've done has been very, very mindful of them being district budgets and still being able to invest in the classrooms. Is that what I'm hearing?
I can certainly start that answer and then turn it over to Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon, and also I think Secretary Treasurer Velestak is very closely involved with our budgets. The short answer is yes, as much as possible. I do want to say, though, that relief costs remain a pressure. And so we are very cognizant to recognize the impact on administrators and teachers, support staff when staff are not replaced in schools. So that was a pressure last year, and it remains a pressure this year. I think the support of non-enrolling teachers, and that means district teachers, is so greatly appreciated because it will make a difference when we just can't get staff and we can't recruit enough staff, that they will be part of the solution, and we're grateful for that. So in that way, it is more help. Thank you.
Dr. Nixon, just before you turn it over to Secretary Treasurer Velestak or Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon, I guess my, my question just with what Trustee Sam has asked, when we're looking at that, are we, we're not an anomaly, if I understand correctly, in terms of relief costs provincially? Like, this is something that other districts are facing as well? If I understand correctly, can I just ask that question, whether we're?
Thank you.
Are we a lone wolf out there?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Thank you so much, Board Chair Greif, to the board and the community. We are not alone. This is a provincial problem. It's been a problem not just in the education sector, but in all sectors. The person who can really help us, I think, Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon, because he's done extensive comparative analysis for us and, and has really helped bring light to, to our strategy, would be Secretary Treasurer Velestak, if he's willing to make a comment about the provincial state of these similar pressures.
Yeah, certainly, I, I, the substitute employee costs across many districts, and, you know, when we look at what the average amount being spent across the province is, we look at, you know, some comparator districts to Kamloops size, those costs are just escalating. So in your budget, when you go from spending six million dollars a year in that particular line item to spending over ten million dollars a year a few years later, that increase in cost is not something that's funded by the province. So there's a number of districts that have just seen the same kind of thing. We've seen these escalating costs. And, you know, when you think, I often tell our board that we can only spend a hundred percent of the budget. So when, when it's an unfunded area and the costs escalate in that area, it, it does just simply put pressures on, on other things in your district, so. And it, like I say, it's just, it's a growing area across the province. I, I think that if you look at post COVID, that's when we've started to see the, the costs increase a lot more. And so that's just one of the things that, that all districts across the province are dealing with right now.
Thank you very much for that. I, I think that it's important for us to have a sense of, of where things are provincially as well as within our own district. And maybe I will actually point out that that was something that was a topic of discussion as well, and if people are interested sort of in our advocacy with the Minister of Education and Childcare, that that was, relief costs were something that we discussed as a Board of Education with her when we had an opportunity to meet her after she was sworn in as the Minister of Education and Childcare, Minister Baer. So I don't know if there are other questions from trustees before we look at entertaining a motion. Yes, Trustee Hickson.
Thank you so much. I, I guess I have a question slash comment because I, I know just being cognizant of the media here, it's really important to emphasize as a trustee, how hard I've been seeing Dr. Nixon, Secretary Treasurer Talon, Secretary Treasurer Velestak. With you, it's hard for the first time to say it, but we can't express our appreciation enough, Ray, for all the work that you've done here. And I, I just want to ask the question that I know every one of us have been feeling over these past months on a day to day basis is, how are we preventing this from happening again? And I know that we've been doing a lot of things, and I know that a lot of thought has gone into this process. And I just want that opportunity for you to express how this is not going to impact us as a district again.
Dr. Nixon.
Thank you so much, Trustee Hickson, for the question. I think we, two things. We're working with Secretary Treasurer Velestak because he is a, he's renowned provincially for his capacity in strategic planning. And so when we are building forecasts and we are looking at our current budget, he has been instrumental in helping us to look at the costs of salaries in actual ways versus a forecasted way, and being able to be quite precise in even estimating benefits in a way that maybe we have learned a lot from, I think. And I think that the other piece to this is we are actually going through budgets at a level of detail we have never gone through before. So when I'm talking to people about utility costs and snow removal, and isn't it a good year, and how much is that saving us? You know what the good side of this is? Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon created live budgets for every single budget holder, including the school principals, of course, they've always had them. But what's interesting is everybody's actually really going over them and seeing areas where it's realistic to save. I think that we all benefit from that when we have to take close scrutiny of our practice and say, what could we do better? I'm really impressed with everybody. That why, that green number for supplies and services is because every single budget holder is contributing. In the school leaders meeting today, when we did our debrief, as we always do, we try to keep everybody informed, they were asking questions about what else they might try, how might we combine, how could we collaborate and do this differently? And the innovation that's come out, the support that's come out, will serve us well next year. We're starting budget priority setting in finance and planning in camera, of course, with the board on Wednesday. We're starting that process nice and early with the help of Secretary Treasurer Velestak, that priority setting, and then, as I said, you're going to see graphs of provincial comparisons and comparisons of like sized districts with us has been immensely helpful to see where we can continue to structure differently. I, I believe on the twenty seventh, that'll be reflected a little bit in our next meeting with quarter two. And I think that that'll really serve us well when we're starting to consult with the board, but also with the community and making sure any other ideas or questions that we have have not gone unturned. And I would just say, Secretary Treasurer Talon, if you have anything to add, or Velestak, if I missed something, please do.
Can I just make a comment about the, the question around how, how will we prevent this from happening again? And I think one of the things, if you look at your budget, ninety percent of your budget, almost ninety percent, is on salaries and benefits. It requires the most attention. So one of the things that, that really you need to do is it's, we can calculate in a budget way your, your salary costs, your benefit costs. But one of the things that's really important is, is how, how do we validate that? How are there multiple ways we can validate what we've made an estimate for to make sure that we're accurate in that estimate? So I think that just building in some process internally within your district that allows you to have multiple ways to validate some of the information that you have, so you're confident with the financial picture that you have. I think that's a key part of some of the sort of ongoing strategies that, that will be in place.
Thank you very much. And I'm just, was there anything that you wanted to add? No, okay, thank you. Before we look at entertaining a motion on this agenda item, I do need a motion because we've gone past nine P M to have our meeting extend past nine P M, moved by Trustee Kang, seconded by Trustee Karpuk. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Sorry, back to the agenda item at hand, just wondering, yeah, are, were there any other questions or are we looking to entertain a motion at this time? Yes, Trustee Ophi. So Trustee Ophi, you are moving. I just want to, can you pull it up again? No, no, that, that's okay. I just want to make sure that we've got the language in. Thank you very much. You're moving that the board approves the amendments to the budget reduction plan as presented. Do I have a second or seconded by Trustee Jules? Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, I'm seeing none. I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed. Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon. Thank you very much, Secretary Treasurer Velestak, and to you, Dr. Nixon, for this, yeah, for this report this evening. I really appreciate it. Does this conclude your agenda items for this evening?
It does.
It does. Thank you. Moving on to item next, we have no new business, so reports from committees and chair. I will just go through this really quickly. So the Minister of Education and Childcare, Minister Baer, on page sixty three in the board package, Minister Baer shared that districts had just received their evaluation of their enhancing student learning reports, which is in our district, sorry, which in our district is called the District Learning Plan. We have reported on the evaluation in the board package and really want to have a chance to celebrate the many growths and welcome the suggestions for continued growth. It was a really nice report and very, I think it was a very solid report for our district. So thank you for all of the work that you've done with that, Dr. Nixon and your teams. Over the holiday, I want to acknowledge that, sorry, we started the new year by acknowledging two special days, National Ribbon Skirt Day on January the fourth and World Braille Day on January the sixth. I know that last year we went and acknowledged Braille Day up at R L. Clemmensen, and it's something that is very meaningful. January sixth, thank you to everyone for making our first couple of weeks back so positive. I hope that each of you enjoyed a rejuvenating winter break. I know that we just came back for a week, although sometimes it feels like we never left. Through our cultural and identity development priority, we really aim to ensure that every learner is honored for who they are. Black Excellence Day and Martin Luther King Day are both celebrated on January the fifteenth. Students in our district will participate with students across sixty districts in a virtual learning session about black history and cultural, sorry, cultural led, will be culture led by the Burnaby School District. Schools of Choice Information Night for kindergarten will be held on January the fifteenth. Kindergarten registration will happen on January, from January twentieth to twenty fourth. There's information on that on, now it's on our Facebook page and I believe on our website as well around that. Bell Let's Talk Day is on January the twenty second, and activities will support youth to promote youth mental health. I think that that, again, is an incredibly worthwhile day to talk about it, and Bell's done a great job of promoting that. International Day of Education is held on January the twenty fourth, and the theme is AI and education, human agency in an automated world. The day encourages reflections on the power of education to equip individuals and communities to navigate, understand, and influence technology advancement, while also emphasizing that education ought to be accessible to everyone. That concludes my chair's report this evening. We have no trustee reports, inquiries, or good news this evening. We have no motions, so it brings us to our notice of meetings. Schedule of upcoming meetings, we have finance and planning meeting on January the fifteenth. QP Labor Management Liaison Meeting, January sixteenth, DPAC Meeting, January twenty first. The next regular public board meeting will occur on Monday, January the twenty seventh, here at the school board office. I will seek a motion to adjourn, but I will ask no one to leave as we have to go back in camera here. So motion to adjourn, moved by Trustee McElvey, seconded by Trustee Hickson. Very adjourned. Thank you so much.